Call to order the regular city council meeting for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for November ninth, two thousand and twenty. Thank you for joining us. In a moment, you will see the flag of the United States. When you see the flag, if you are able, would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Judy Hutchinson.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Rachel Holtein.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nussler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present.
Thank you very much. We have three proclamations and ceremonies this evening. We have a recognition of the Wheat Ridge one oh one, create a city one oh one course for residents. We have a proclamation for small business Saturday, and we have a proclamation in honor of Veterans Day and honor of those who have served our country. So I would like to begin with a Wheat Ridge one oh one recognition. And the mayor and city council of the city of Wheat Ridge would like to formally recognize and appreciate the participants in the two thousand and twenty Wheat Ridge one oh one program and all who all dedicated an immense portion of time to learning about the city of Wheat Ridge and how it works. The development of this program was part of the city council's strategic plan, strategy seven point three point one, create a city one oh one course for residents. The newly created six-week program is designed to share detailed information about how the city of Wheat Ridge works and to discuss strategies for effective public discourse and community engagement. The participants who successfully completed the two thousand and twenty program are Ben Brown, Patricia Cervera, Amanda de Razzende, Nancy Dragani, Al Gallo, Martha Hedy, Joe Maloney, Melody Mascaranes, Chris Miller, Betty Jo Page, Lisa Rucker, Joe Sehousen, Jennifer Webby Seac, and Dan Williams. The mayor and city council would like to again thank these participants for their interest in the city of Wheat Ridge, and we hope these individuals continue to stay engaged in the Wheat Ridge community. And many of them have joined us tonight on screen here in our Zoom format, and I want to take a look at all of you and say thank you very much for your hard work in this program. I know that we met many of you the other day when we were working. I want to congratulate you and thank you. And I hope that we see you continue to stay engaged in our city. You're great participants, and we appreciate your input. So thank you all for being here, and thanks for your work on Wheat Ridge one oh one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could, I would just like to thank Mary Ann Schilling. She did a fabulous job of arranging this. I think all of the participants are clapping.
Mary Ann.
She did an amazing job, and just all the staff that participated too, I think, heard a lot of great positive comments from the participants, and they learned a lot. So, and thank you, participants. You had great questions, and it was a pleasure.
Thank you all very much. Our next proclamation is in honor of Small Business Saturday on November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty. Whereas Small Business Saturday is a day dedicated to supporting small businesses and communities across the country. Founded by American Express in two thousand and ten, this day is celebrated each year on a Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas since its start started in two thousand and twenty, consumers have reported spending an estimated one hundred and twenty billion with a B dollars across all ten Small Business Saturdays combined. And whereas seventy-seven percent of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said it inspires them to shop small throughout the year, not just for this holiday. And whereas sixty-six percent of consumers reported the main reason they support small business is because of their contributions to the community. And whereas the most reported reason why consumers are aware of Small Business Saturday is a day to shop and dine at independently owned businesses and support their community. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado supports our local small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty as Small Business Saturday, encouraging business residents in our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And what is there of in this ninth day of November two thousand and twenty, Bud Starker, Mayor? So thank you very much for bringing this forward. We have a lot of very terrific small businesses in our community. They thrive. They thrive when we support them. And when we support small businesses, they reinvest in our community. It's a win-win for all of us. So I hope that you'll not only on November twenty eighth, but every day in the year that these businesses are open, give them your consideration for your business. Thank you. And I'm very pleased now in to have a proclamation for Veterans Day in honor of all those who have served our country. And joining joining us today to accept the proclamation is Wheat Ridge District Number One, resident Bill Peterson. And Bill, I didn't know if that was general or Colonel, but we'll go with we'll go with general and hope that we haven't made a mistake. Colonel Peterson is a World War Two veteran who served in the who served as a tail gunner for the Flying Tigers. The Flying Tigers will combat missions against Japan over the China Sea. Colonels Peterson, we're grateful for your service. And as a member of the community, Wheat Ridge City Hall will be closed in observance of Veterans Day on November eleventh. And I want to read this proclamation. In honor of those who have served our country, whereas on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month in the year nineteen eighteen, an armistice between Germany and the Allied nations went into effect on the Western Front. Although World War One didn't officially end until seven months later with the Treaty of Versailles, November eleventh was declared the day to remember and commemorate as Veterans Day by President Dwight David Eisenhower. And whereas on November eleven, Americans commemorate the sacrifice and immeasurable contributions of our nation's veterans who have proudly defended and preserved liberty and freedom for us all. And whereas each Veterans Day, we recognize the brave men and women who fearlessly and faithfully defended the United States and whose devotion to duty and patriotism deserves our respect and admiration each and every day. And whereas throughout our nation's history, veterans have defended our way of life with integrity, dedication, and distinction. And whereas we are especially grateful to those Wheat Ridge residents who have served in our armed forces. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, call upon those throughout our community to celebrate November eleven, two thousand and twenty as Veterans Day, the recognition and grateful appreciation of our veterans who protected our freedom and serve our country as members of the United States Armed Forces and witness thereof this ninth day of November two thousand and twenty, Bud Starker, Mayor. And Bill, I want to I want to welcome you to our meeting. I see you have your Flying Tigers mask on, and I want to I want to thank you for joining us today.
Happy to be here. Of course, at ninety-five, I'm happy to be anyplace.
Well, you're looking you're looking good.
I feel pretty good, pretty decent. You look pretty good, too. I haven't seen you for a while.
Well, it's been a while. I'd like to I'd like to say that I was honored to stand with you at our our Hayward Hayward Park not long ago where you received the medal for your service. And I know you have other other awards, and I want to congratulate you. I want to thank you for joining us tonight and and really send out our appreciation to all of the veterans within our within our voice and vision that have served our country with honor and distinction.
Well, thank you very much for the honor. I appreciate what you're doing for me. And I've, as I say, ninety-five years old to get any honors, it's it's pretty nice. Usually you think, you know, when you get up in the nineties that people don't care anymore. But I found that they do. Young people do. And I've had I've lived here in Wheat Ridge now for sixty years. My boys have gone to Jefferson and Wheat Ridge and Lakewood and and all the schools. And now my my grandkids are going. Now my great-grandkids are going. So I don't know what God's doing for me and why he keeps me around here. I'm still working those seven days a week. And then that lovely Spalding, Sarah, you know, got some things for me to do for the next three days. I'm talking to three people. I'm having Z comms or whatever they're called. I'm having this and having that. My goodness gracious. And see, this I can give a plug for my councilwoman, too, when they fixed our street on Newland Street. We had a hard time. I made several calls trying to get the street sweeper over here. And if my council lady is there, I don't know which one you are. Thank you very much for she got to work right away. And boy, she called the district, somebody or other, and called me back. And that's really service. I like the city council. I like Wheat Ridge anyhow. I think you're good. My big push, but for any more talks that I give are not going to be for me. I've got enough medals. I've been honored enough. But I'm now I'm going after the honor for the cooks that cook my meals at two o'clock in the morning, or the guy that loaded my guns, my fifty caliber guns. So when I got in him and the Japanese came, they worked. And I want to thank the guys that that packs our our oxygen, gets everything ready, you know, puts air in the tires. And nobody, you never heard of a cook getting a medal, did you? No, I don't think so. But now, when you talk to people and they say they've been in service, just ask them to put a plug in if they're still alive. Any of the mechanics or like MPs, we had MPs guarding our airfield in China. We didn't have any. This was the US Army Air Corps. And that's pronounced right, US Army Air Corps. And the MPs that were over there that used to drive up in the mountains when the red Chinese would shoot their little dumb old guns at us and just it bothered us. Didn't kill us. They just bothered us. And the MPs, I never heard them ever getting a medal. So, you know, and how do they know how many planes I shot? I wasn't that good a shot. Yeah, he was pretty good. But anyhow, I want to thank you for all of that. But that's what I'm putting my interest in is the ground support people, you know, and I suppose it's right in every business. But just for me, and you, you people have been just so good to us and so good to my family. And my wife and I were married seventy-one years last April. She's passed away since then. But seventy-one years, we've had time to do our shopping and growing up in Wheat Ridge, and we have really enjoyed it.
Well, thank you very much, Colonel, for joining us. And I think we'll keep you busy and maybe have you back in another five years. How does that sound? All right. Thank you very much, Colonel Peterson, for joining us. And that, I believe, concludes our proclamations and ceremonies. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. And we have in your package, study session notes for October nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and the city council minutes for October's twenty-sixth, and study session notes for the for the date of October twenty-sixth. If without any objections, if I hear no objections, we will let those stand as presented. And no objections noted, so they will stand as presented. We are now ready for our citizens' right to speak. Portion of our our meeting tonight. I'm going to go into a little bit more more information on how how the details work on our citizens' right to speak. The citizen, the city council encourages our citizens' participation in their meetings. Time is set aside now for citizens to address the council any item not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. With few exceptions, speakers who wish to speak on a public hearing item, a decision, resolution, or motion, may speak on that item when it comes up on the agenda. So you'll have a have a chance to speak at that generally at the conclusion of the staff report on that item. If you're joining us on the Zoom format, we will use the raise your hand function in Zoom to bring you into the meeting. And at the bottom of your Zoom screen in the center, you will see an icon that says participant. If you hover your hover your your mouse on the screen and go to the center in the bottom, you'll see an icon that says participants. If you will click that icon, you'll come up with the next screen. And at the bottom right hand of that screen is the words that says raise hand. And if you will raise your hand, we will we will be able to see that our associate working that that icon. And then we will be able to call you in to speak. So when it's your turn to speak, the host will see your raised hand and invite you to speak. When you're invited to speak, please unmute your computer device. Give us your first name and your last name, if you would please spell your last name, and give us your address for the record. We appreciate that. You'll have three minutes to address the council. The mayor pro temp will start time after your self-introduction and display on the Zoom screen a countdown when thirty seconds remain. Please conclude your remarks when your time is up. If you are joining us on the telephone, the procedure will be similar, but with a few changes. After all the speakers on the Zoom format have spoken, I will call for speakers on the telephone, and you may speak up and be recognized. You may unmute your your voice by touching your mute unmute button on your smartphone or start star six. I guess you you hit the star button to the six on a on a on a push button telephone. And and that will unmute you, and you can speak up, and I will invite you to speak. Introduce yourself as outlined above, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. If you have a dial-in phone, I'm not you'll you'll have to dial into to our regular number. I'm not sure how to how to get dial-in callers in, but we will work on that if anyone is still using a rotary dial telephone. So if you if you would like, if you have technological limitations and are not able to participate with your own technology in the Zoom format, you may make arrangements before noon on the day of the meeting to use our facilities in City Hall. And I will direct you to directions on doing this can be found on our website at WheatRidge.co.us. Hopefully, those are instructions are reasonably clear. And and we hope that we hope that everyone can join us who wants to join us in the meeting. So with that, we will begin our citizens' right to speak. I don't believe we have anyone in council chambers that are using council chambers. So I will go to Ms. Scheck and ask if we have anyone with their hand raised. Ms. Hoppe.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. We did not approve the agenda, which we usually do before citizens' right to speak. So I don't know if you'd like to approve the agenda before we start. This is right to speak.
Oh, my gosh, there it is. So let us let us do that. Thank you very much for reminding me. If there are no objections, we will let the agenda stay as presented. Seeing none, we will let the agenda stay as presented. Now we will go on to our citizens' right to speak. Ms. Scheck.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Guy. One second. And I don't have any other Zoom hands off to Guy, but we have Guy to start.
All right, Guy, if you would come online and introduce yourself, and you may continue.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can certainly hear you.
Great. My name's Guy Namiash, N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H, thirty-six fifty Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. And I just wanted to thank everybody for their support on the Gazette coming back online. It's been pretty exciting. And thanks for the private messages, especially to Sarah Spalding for sharing so many great news bits and stories. Really appreciate it. Our next issue is coming out, I think, in a week and a half. So look for stories about our business, local businesses, and how they've worked hard through these times, as well as the neighborhood advocacy program. And then finally, no need to take turns on this, but all our counselors, feel free to write articles and just send them in if you want to address your your districts. We already have one council person that's written in, so look for that article. But I really appreciate the everybody reaching out and especially posting the Gazette at your doorstep. That's been really exciting. So thanks so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, and thanks for picking up the paper. Other speakers, Ms. Scheck.
I don't see anyone else with their hand up, Mayor. Shall I start unmuting others?
Yes, if we have others on the telephone who would like to speak, we're happy to take your comments at this time. If you would unmute yourself and ask to speak, we'll bring you into the meeting. Is there anyone further from the from the who from the public who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? Now is your opportunity.
I don't see any mute, any hands raised, Mayor, and I've unmuted callers.
Okay, doesn't sound like we have any more callers. So thank you very much for joining us, and we will we will finish that portion of our agenda. So we will again go into agenda item number one. This is our consent agenda item. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda item number one, A, motion to approve monthly payments to Kaiser Permanente for January through December, two thousand and twenty-one, membership billing not to exceed a total of two million six hundred thousand.
Go ahead and read all four of them.
Yep. One, B, a motion to award a contract to seven-point construction of Centennial, Colorado, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars for safety and other improvements to City Hall and approve a five percent contingency in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars for an unforeseen project expenses. And one, C, motion to adopt the two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting calendar. One, D, motion to cancel the November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, and December twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty, regular business meeting of the Wheat Ridge City Council due to the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. And one, E, resolution fifty-six dash two thousand and twenty, a resolution approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for CARESAC local government distributions.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items number one, A through one, E?
I move to can I move to approve consent agenda Bruce, one, A through one, E.
Second, you have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the consent agenda has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number two. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number nineteen dash two thousand and twenty, ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at the southeast corner of West I seventy Frontage Road, North and Ward Road from Agricultural Two to Plan Mixed Use Development with an outline development plan, case number WZ dash nineteen dash zero three slash Ward Road Pond. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural Two to Plan Mixed Use Development with an outline development for property located at the southeast corner of West I seventy Frontage Road, North and Ward Road. The zone change will allow for a variety of commercial, residential, and recreational uses on the property.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the clerk, do we have an ordinance number on this item? And you are mute.
Thank you. Six, one, six, nine, nine, I believe, is the next in sequence.
Okay, thank you very much. We are on an ordinance on second reading. This is a public hearing. It is quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And if you intend to speak on this on this item, would you please raise your hand and affirm that you intend to tell the truth as you know it in this matter? And if you do, please say I do. Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this item?
We do. Scott Cutler, our senior planner, is here. I don't know if Ken you want to introduce or go straight to Scott?
Straight to Scott is fine, Patrick. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, take it away.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got two presentations tonight, one from myself, and then one from our applicant. I'll be playing two videos. And then I have a slightly revised condition of approval recommendation that I'll go into at the end of the two presentations. Can you all see the video?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'll go ahead and start that. Hello, my name is Scott Cutler, and I'm a planner with the city of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ nineteen oh three, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural Two to a Plan Mixed Use Development with an outline development plan. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, the city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. This is a two thousand and eighteen aerial view of the property. Property is outlined in red. It's just under twenty-three acres and is currently vacant. The Ward Road Pond is a large portion of the property. It's located at the southeast corner of the I seventy Frontage Road, North and Ward Road, just north of I seventy and the off-ramp toward Road. The surrounding area is a mix of uses, but primarily commercial and industrial in nature. The Wheat Ridge Ward commuter rail station is located just off the map to the northeast, about a half mile walk from this site. This is a zoning map. The site is zone agricultural two. Most of the surrounding zoning is industrial employment or planned industrial development. The Kaiser campus to the west is zone C one. At the top of the screen to the north is the TOD area, which is primarily zone mixed use. Some neighborhoods further southeast are zoned R two. The topography of the site makes development challenging. The site slopes steeply from the Frontage Road down to the shoreline of the pond. The only flat area on the site is the area extending into the pond on the east side of the site. As I'll discuss in a minute, development in the northwest area of the site will need to conform with the existing steep topography. Some portions of the site along the Frontage Road are preserved in a slope easement, which was created when the road was constructed and will not allow for development in that area. The request tonight is for a rezone from A two to Plan Mixed Use Development, PMUD. Given the surrounding conditions, the unique topography, and the presence of a large pond, the PMUD zoning is the most appropriate zone change option. The planned development process entails several steps before development can occur. With this application, we are only at step one. The outline development plan, ODP, accompanies the zone change request by establishing the zoning and development standards. In the future, a specific development plan, SDP, will be required for each development site as created by the ODP. A subdivision may also be required to clean up existing lot lines, create developable parcels, and to sell or develop lots separately or under different ownership. The code allows for processing ODPs and SDPs concurrently or sequentially, and the applicant has chosen the sequential two-step option. I'll go through the ODP document and then talk about the criteria for review and staff findings. The outline development plan establishes the PMUD zoning. The ODP is two sheets in this case, which are in the staff report. The first page has standard signature blocks, legal descriptions, development standards, and a description of the development. The second sheet shown here contains the proposed site layout, which I'll show in more detail in just a minute. The site is broken into two planning areas. Planning Area One is located at the northwest of the site at the hard corner of Ward Road and the Frontage Road. Planning Area Two is much larger, but contains the entire pond, most of the shoreline, and a spit of land on the east side of the property with a development pad that extends into the pond. This is a close-up of PA one showing the This is a close-up of PA one showing the primary features. The sole public access point will be located halfway between Ward Road and Van Gordon Street on the Frontage Road. Only emergency access was permitted by C dot on Ward Road. The proposed pedestrian trail location is shown along the pond shoreline in purple. The final location of this trail will be determined at time of SDP through review of engineering documents, but the ODP requires a pedestrian trail as part of its open space commitments. The proposed building envelopes are shown in brown. Due to the topography, these buildings will be built into the hillside with opportunities for parking behind or underneath the buildings. Much of the shoreline area is being preserved as open space. This is a close-up of PA two. You can see the continuation of the pedestrian trail along the north side of the pond to the access point shown at the northeast corner. The city's proposed linear park and trail will connect across the Frontage Road to the north along a direct connection to the transit station. The access point shown here traverses track A of the Lake Mont Center Development over an access easement, and a drive aisle would head south along the narrow portion of land to the building pad in PA two. The current zoning is agricultural two, which is a relic of the site's past as a gravel quarry. A two would allow single-family homes on lots of an acre or more or agricultural uses. In today's context, it is an atypical zoning for a site with adjacency to an interstate and within a half mile of a commuter rail station. This slide goes over the proposed development standards for the site, which are detailed on page one of the ODP document, including uses, architecture, building height, parking, setbacks, and landscaping requirements. The permitted uses and development standards shown here seek to balance the site's proximity to transit, access to water, visibility from the interstate, adjacency to a state highway, and the city's desire for high-quality urban design and open space. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Full analysis of the criteria for consideration of the zone change are provided in the staff report. This image is an excerpt from the comprehensive plan, which provides some guidance in terms of land use. The light purple designation denotes a mix of uses, including employment, which is denoted by the large asterisk. You can see here again the site's proximity to the train station. The comprehensive plan and more recent planning documents call for a mix of transit-supportive uses in the area. Residential uses closer to the train station and on the site will essentially book in the subarea and support the employment uses and retail businesses in the area, creating a rich diversity of land use that is called for in the city's guiding documents. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on June eleventh, twenty nineteen at City Hall. One person attended the meeting in addition to the applicant team and staff, and the notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Because ODPs are conceptual in nature, many of the specific utility comments will come at time of the specific development plan. On October first, twenty twenty, planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the request. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days and letters were sent to property owners within a six-hundred-foot radius. Comments collected on the Wheat Ridge Speaks website will be reviewed by city council and entered into the public record. Staff believes the zone change request meets the criteria. It allows for a compatible land use. It complies with the comprehensive plan and the city's vision for transit-supportive uses and recreational amenities in the northwest subarea, and it provides opportunity for reinvestment in the area. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. The city council approves the ODP, the zone change is approved, and the applicant can move forward with specific development plans and a subdivision plot. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now I'll play the applicant's presentation, and these are the same presentations that were available on the Wheat Ridge Speaks website for public viewing. Give me just a minute. All right.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Barron. I'm an architect with Think Tank Studio, and we are here representing Mr. Mark Joelstad with JMS Lake Holdings LLC, who is the owner of the property under consideration by your committee this evening. The project site you see before you in this aerial view is located at the northeast intersection of Interstate Seventy and Ward Road and also bounded on the north by the West I-70 Frontage Road North. This property contains one of the two ponds known as Ward Ponds. The twenty-two-point-seven-three-acre subject parcel was originally platted in Jefferson County in nineteen oh seven prior to the incorporation of the city of Wheat Ridge. Around the time of the construction of the I-70 corridor, this property was an active gravel mine to support the construction of the road grade. When the operation ceased, the natural springs and seepage from the irrigation infrastructure graded the pond, which today covers approximately fifty-one percent of the property. As a result of these activities, the remaining portion of the property consists largely of steep tree-covered gravel embankments to the shoreline. A small peninsula, which housed the mining equipment, is uniquely positioned in the lake, creating an approximately two-acre site with related site access from the Frontage Road. The following views depict the existing condition of the lake and surrounding property. The previous owner of this property was the city of Arvada. During their time of ownership, the property remained undeveloped. For a limited period of time and in association with the Colorado Department of Wildlife, limited access to the shoreline for fishing was permitted. Mr. Joelstad of JMS Lake LLC, the applicant, seeing the unique potential amenity afforded by the approximately eleven-acre pond, purchased the property in its existing condition in July of two thousand and sixteen with the goal of rehabilitating this unmaintained and underutilized property into a key recreational and mixed-use gateway project at one of the principal entrances to the city of Wheat Ridge. The outline development plan documents under your review propose to rezone the subject parcel from its current agricultural two designation to the planned mixed-use development zone district required to provide the necessary flexibility for future redevelopment of this site. The proposed project scope will entail a mix of commercial, retail, and residential uses surrounding a private lake and linear open space feature for the enjoyment of the residents and patrons. The applicant is proposing two planning areas for consideration. Planning Area One on the upper portion of the site is proposed to house a multifamily residential community consisting of mid-rise multifamily apartments with complementary retail amenities configured to top-structured parking integrated within the site topography. The architecture will front the West I-70 Frontage Road North as well as the future Ward Station development area. The lower peninsula site in Planning Area Two is proposed to house a retail marine dealership, a wakeboard cable park, and a feature restaurant. The design intent for this area is to take advantage of the inherent waterfront character and develop the architecture, open space, and the site amenities into a feature recreational and residential destination. Following our review of the Wheat Ridge Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Plan, the Northwest SubArea Plan, and Ward Station Vision Documents, as well as our collaboration with the Wheat Ridge staff in drafting this application before you, we believe the ODP and a request for rezone is in keeping with the design intent and statutory requirements prescribed therein. Further, we believe the proposed redevelopment of this property will enhance the unique open space and recreational potential of this site to create a vibrant mixed-use community that would complement the surrounding development area as a whole and further provide the gateway focus into Wheat Ridge. To conclude our presentation, we appreciate this opportunity and welcome your feedback on this proposal. We are also happy to address any of your questions you may have regarding the project. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. And, um, before I conclude, I just want to let you know we do have an additional, um, recommended condition of approval that was not in the council action form. Um, and this is just at the request of, um, the city attorney regarding, um, some of the access issues across track A, which were described in the staff report um, and also mentioned in the presentation. Um, so just to clarify, the new condition would be, um, and maybe we can spell it out later if you need it on the screen or anything like that. Uh, that no building permit or grading and drainage permit may be granted for the site until a resolution of the claim defect and access across track A is resolved to the satisfaction of the city attorney. Now would allow the rezoning application to proceed, but before any construction begins, um, yeah, the, the adjacent property owner and the applicant would have to figure out, um, the access across that tract. Um, with that, uh, my presentation is complete. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, before we go to questions of council, I would like to open this up for, uh, comment from the public. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on, uh, agenda item number two, uh, this is your opportunity. Uh, you may raise your hand in the Zoom format or, and after that, we will go to any speakers on the telephone who wish to speak. So if you would like to speak on this, please, uh, raise your hand in the Zoom format, and Ms. Shek will bring you into our meeting.
Mr. Mayor, have we sworn in anybody on this public hearing?
Well, we've sworn in everybody that was going to speak on this. Uh, so I have, I, I guess I can do individually if, uh, I'm going to go to our attorney and see whether I should, uh, swear in everyone individually.
Um, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion would be that, that, uh, made the announcement that I think you have made in the past, which is that
Okay.
any person wishing to testify by, by testifying uh, in either format, the Zoom format, by telephone, any other way is, uh, deemed to have consented and sworn that they will tell the truth as they understand it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dahl, if you intend to speak or testify on this matter, by testifying, you agree that you will tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. Thank you, Mr. Dahl, uh, and Mr. Urban. Uh, Ms. Shek, do we have anyone raising their hand to speak?
Uh, we, you, Mayor, the first up is Guy.
Okay, Mr. Namiach, please introduce yourself and you may speak.
Hey, do I have to introduce myself again and spell and everything?
Yep, yes, you do, with an S.
Guy Namiach, N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H, thirty-six fifty, Ward Road. Um, I have a question, uh, regarding the study. When you are doing this study, especially in this, in this particular case, can you estimate the number of birds that live in that area and how many different types, species of birds that live in that area? And then same thing with fish in that great pond. You used to take my kids fishing there, by the way, great little place. But is that a study? Like, when you do traffic study, when you're going to change a neighborhood, do you also do a, uh, a wildlife study in terms of how many birds and how many types of birds?
Thank you very much, Mr. Namiach. After our questioning, we will see if, if, uh, that question can be answered. We have additional people, uh, wishing to speak on this item.
I don't see anyone with their hands up, Mayor, and I have unmuted others.
Okay, if there's anyone on the telephone who would like to, uh, to speak on this item, you may do so. If you'll speak up, we'll bring you into the meeting. Any other members from the public who would like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Okay, I don't hear anyone from the public, so we will move on to, yes?
I'm so sorry. We do have one person that just put their hand up, and that's Elizabeth Smith.
Okay, Ms. Smith, if you'd like to introduce yourself, um, and give us your address, then you will be able to speak.
Um, Ms. Smith, your, your hand is up, but you're still muted.
Thank you. I'm sorry about being muted. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Please, please continue.
Again, my name is Elizabeth Smith. I live at forty-two fifty-five Parfae Street, Wheat Ridge. And, uh, I would applaud Guy's consideration of the birds and the critters. Um, I think that's something that we need to consider. I see it disappearing in Wheat Ridge. And one of the reasons I'm attending this meeting is because I pass that site quite a bit. And I lamented when I saw that the notice was up that, well, this sounds like a good thing to do, you know, something with that property. I thought, oh, my gosh, how much stuff in the way of animals and birds are going to be disrupted. Um, and or simply how many trees are going to come down? What is, what's going to happen to the area? And again, I applaud him for bringing that aspect up because I think it's an aspect of Wheat Ridge that a lot of people really like. They like the wild aspect of Wheat Ridge, and, uh, we tend to lose it. So I would advocate for anything that could mitigate the taking down every single tree and planting little lollipop-stick trees all along and, and turning it into something that is very un-wild. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Shek, do we have, uh, further citizens who would like to speak on this item?
Um, not that I see here, Mayor.
Okay, uh, we don't have any hands raised in the Zoom format. Is there anyone on the telephone who, uh, would like to speak on this item? We're happy to have you. Okay, checking our hands in the Zoom format one more time?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close our citizens' right to speak on this agenda item number two and go to questions from council. Please put your hand up, Ms. Hoppy.
I thank you, Ms. Mayor. I actually just wanted to make the statement that, um, you did swear in Mr. Johnstone and Mr. Cutler. Um, they raised their hands and said I do, although they were on mute. We saw, we saw them say the words I do, so I just want to make sure that people understand they were sworn in.
Thank you. Um, additional questions from council? Uh, Ms. Weaver?
I would just like to understand if there are any other um, state regulations or when, when we're dealing with a pond uh, or a larger body of water, are, uh, do other things come into play besides just our planning regulations uh, regarding either the environment or the water or habitat or anything like that? So beyond just counts of things, but I'm just kind of curious how the state or the county looks at this kind of development, or if they do at all.
Um, I can start out. Um, so we, uh, with, as part of this application, um, we sent it on referral to um, the Maia High Flood District just to get their input on this pond, um, and also to the two-ditch companies where their water traverses the site. Um, they didn't have any feedback, um, and so, um, we're just kind of proceeding as is. I do want to say, though, that the pond, um, as part of this uh, rezoning application is proposed to be relatively the same. Um, so there, while there will be work around the banks, um, the outline development plan actually requires that the pond be preserved. Um, so that's, that's the biggest one. Um, and yeah, the, the Maia High Flood District, um, which is the, um, I guess water and great, uh, grading district that represents or, um, we had to follow their regulations. They had no comments on the application.
Okay. What about, um, the, I mean, because obviously the pond can stay, but is there any sort of regulation? I mean, just this is, this is different than anything we've sort of dealt with as far as like setbacks and things like that. So, so when you have a body of water like this, is, is it a natural body of water or is it a retention pond or is it? And I, I just have a couple more questions. I just.
Um, I see, uh, the applicant unmuted himself, so maybe we'll start there. Um, but to our knowledge, it was created as part of a gravel mine. Um, but then is actually mostly fed through spring water and runoff.
So it is, it is naturally fed. It did, the levels stay roughly the same?
Uh, Patrick Barron, do you have any comments on that? I, you had more knowledge of that than I did.
Sure, um, we had been advised in some of our, I'm sorry, my name is Patrick Barron, uh, uh, PO Box seven eighty-one, Firestone, Colorado, eight oh five three oh, for the applicant. Um, we had been advised early in our research phase of the project that, given that the pond was not a naturally occurring body of water, meaning it was, it was basically the remnant, uh, it filled up as the remnant of the gravel mine that it is not regulated much like a naturally occurring lake or stream. Uh, however, the water level is, uh, the source of the water is the springs and the irrigation ditch seepage. So that water level does fluctuate and is balanced somewhat by a, uh, a channel that goes to the lower lake to the east on the Vermillion property.
So I guess, I guess I have, I have two sort of questions that I'm not sure can be answered right now, but my, my first one is, is sort of what if, what if we go into a situation where we are in massive drought and this gets drained for whatever reason? Um, and becomes, uh, I, I, to, to I, I, to, to, to be mild, bright and eyesore and sort of then people want it to be filled again and we sort of, we have a, a water issue. So I'd, I'd be curious to sort of understand what the maintenance of the water is in long term. Um, and, and then I'd also like to sort of understand that. While it is not a naturally occurring water body, we don't have a lot of naturally occurring water bodies in the, in the state, but we still have. Protection rules around some of those. And so I'm, I'm curious if there is any uh, work. Any conversation that we can have around um, mitigating a. A boundary uh, that would retain trees and or riparian-like habitat. For the wildlife and sort of what, what that might look like. I understand that, that we're talking about developing it and. Um, but just in terms of keeping the water way, a water way and the maintenance of the banks. Thanks.
Sure. Um, I, I think some of those questions have, need further investigation. I can't answer them all right now. Um, however, I would say that what we do know of the species that are occurring on the site right now, many of the trees species. Were surveyed by a uh, um, a horticulturist. Who came and looked at them and the, the large uh, majority of the tree species there are unfortunately uh, nuisance and or weed species. Um, so those have been selectively uh, in the process of being removed over time. The fish species, I, I fished there twenty years ago as well. I'm, I think most of them are non-native species, uh, largemouth bass, bass and whatnot. Um, but I wouldn't say that what we can answer is that the current uh, O D P plan. This is a pretty rare development parcel where over fifty percent, it's actually about fifty-two percent. Which it fluctuates a little bit with the water level, but about fifty-two percent of the site is inherently open space because it is water. Um, another large portion of the site will be the sloped hillside or the beach, if you will, that we've indicated. As our trail space on the site plan. So that further adds to the open space. So that, the goal of that is to. Keep that fairly natural in um, in design and have the hillside accommodate. The structure to support the buildings because this uh, hillside is so very steep. We almost have to support parking within a structured environment within the hillside. So that further reduces the total footprint on the side of the development.
And to continue that, um, so on page, uh, I guess two of the outline development plan. Um, you can kind of look at the northwest bank of the lake and see that most of that is actually labeled as open space. I mean, it's not proposed to be part of any sort of development site other than a trail going through there. Um, so that will continue to be preserved as part of any sort of future development.
Okay, then just one last question and this, Scott, this is probably more for you. When we have sort of a, a site plan like this, um, I know that in, in more traditional developments, we do actually have a measurement of. How many trees there need to be in the different kind of landscaping and things like that. Does anything uh, play out differently because of this water body or will it have a significant amount of? I, I understand that it sounds like there's, there's invasive weed trees and things like that, but what? What is different or what is required for this kind of development regarding the green space? Or the, the greenness that has to be retained?
Right, so um, with the development, a couple of things, um, of course, uh, streetscape improvements will require the planting of trees. And obviously those are not going to be mature trees, but those will be along the streetscape. Um, the out, open space as labeled on the outline development plan is a requirement that is. Um, pretty uh, atypical, actually, um, just because the site is so large and has such uh, great natural features. Um, we did actually require that, um, particularly around the lakeshore to be preserved as open space and. The uh, Patrick mentioned that a horticulturist did do a tree analysis. Um, we would be requesting that a lot of the trees where possible are preserved, but of course nuisance species we're fine with getting rid of. Um, and then uh, for planning area one, um, there's a maximum building coverage as well. So. Only seventy percent of that site can be covered by building. And then the remaining, basically the balance of the site would be access drives and landscaped areas as well, um, for the residents. Um, and similar for the planning area two, um, there's maximum building coverage, so not. Not all of the site will be building and in that area, um, we would then require uh, landscaping, which is just following city code at that point.
Okay, I promise, just one last question. Um, uh, the weed species that you're talking about as far as trees. Um, are they truly invasives or are they just, um, some people consider elms weeds, some people consider cottonwoods tree weeds?
Um, most of the trees that we found were Russian olives, which I believe on the city's website is clearly invasive. Uh, there is a large quantity of Siberian elm that are diseased. Uh, there's a large quantity of box elder, wandering box elder, as I understand. And uh, I don't think there were actually a lot of cottonwoods. There's a lot of um, smaller shrub type bushes and weeds in there too. That are about eight to ten feet in height. Those species had not been, you know, detailed surveyed because they were shrubs.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, Miss Hoppy?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. My question is about um, what is being called open space on the property and it's a um. Private property and it's going to have a trail on it. So can you explain? What the access will look like? Will it be any, any person can um, access this part of the private property and the trail? Or will that be specifically for um, the, the end users of the, the buildings that'll be built on the property?
The uh, O D P on sheet one has a section called open space and landscaping. And um, section A of that area says that the site shall include a publicly accessible multi-use trail. Connecting to the city's linear park north of the frontage road. Um, final design uh, of that trail will be determined at time of the specific development plan, but it does specifically call it out as needing to be accessible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, council, Miss Dozeman?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So will the pond become like a private area for um, the residential? tenants?
Uh, yes, so it is on private property currently and not publicly accessible and would remain that way. Um, but the intent of the trail is to allow some public access along the lakeshore. Um, and then the proposed use for the actual pond itself would be that. Boat recreational facility at the southeast corner. Um, so there will be some. Access, I guess, to the public.
Okay, um, so in two thousand and fifteen is when like um, the agreement ended with um. Part of, what was it? Some wildlife, I'm trying to find it in my notes. Um, where they stocked the fish. So that was the only reason why it was open to public access?
I, I believe so. Um, and, and Patrick might have more history than I do, but I know that the property previously was actually owned by the city of Arvada. Even though it's in Wheat Ridge, um, and they took it over after the gravel mining operations closed and. Had some sort of limited access. Um, I don't know if that was a formal agreement. Um, but they were the ones that were kind of maintaining the pond at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Miss Hoppy?
Thanks, Mister Mayor. Um, Scott, can you go over the um, the additional? Uh, uh, reasons that we're adding that you wanted to add to the motion and that it would be added as a, a number four. Uh, just so that um, we can get it correct, we can get it strained out and if Miss Dozeman uh, makes the motion to approve so that she'll have the language for that.
Sure, and it would actually be a, a condition of approval. Um, I know council doesn't do these as often as planning commission does. Um, but there would be the three items, um, with the reasons and then that. Last item that I added would be the first condition of approval. Um, did, would you like me to repeat what I said earlier about what the actual condition is?
Could you do that, please? I, I, I wrote it down. You said it kind of fast. I think I wrote it down right, but I, I just want to double check.
Okay, yeah, and let me know if you miss it. Um, so it would be no building permit. Or grading and drainage permit. May be granted until resolution of the claimed defect in access. Across tract A. Is resolved to the satisfaction of the city attorney.
Thank you. Did you get all that down? Additional questions? Uh, Miss Dozeman?
To read into the recommended motion?
You would, yes.
As, as, so it'd be as a condition, so you would do the, the one, two, three, and then you'd say with the following condition with that.
Correct, correct.
No building permit. Or grading permit would be granted?
Correct.
We might, uh, is it possible to get that sort of typed out in format so that we might have a screen sharing on that? Would that be helpful, Miss Dozeman, when the time comes?
I can do that real quick.
Okay, if you can do that, so we might have that as a, as a condition number four when we get to the motion. Thank you. Are there any, uh, is, is more discussion on this item? There isn't. I had a couple of things, Mister, Mister Cutler. The, the road that enters planning area number one from the north. Uh, are there any concerns from an engineering point of view about the grade, uh, of the grade on that, on that road?
Believe we actually have an engineer on our call that can answer that better. Um, but that access. Point was picked uh, specifically because it's basically halfway between Ward Road and Ben Gordon Street. Um, and the intent is that it, it starts at the um, frontage road and then kind of goes into the parking area. Um, but a lot of th- those questions are actually going to be handled at time of the specific development plan because that's when we look specifically at. Grading and um, the parking layout for the site.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And then, um. Does the property owner um, have water rights uh, to the water in the pond?
Yes.
So, and, and do you have the capacity to keep that, to keep water in there?
Uh, that I cannot answer at this time, given that it is a naturally occurring water source. Uh, but we could, uh, as part of our uh, specific site development plan, if that needs to be addressed, we would certainly be happy to look into that.
Okay, uh, thank you. But as I understand, the size of the pond is required to stay more or less the same.
It can shrink a little bit, um, and that's due to the fact that they likely will have to do some regrading to allow for access. Um, the construction of the trail, um, and things of that nature. Um, but there is a minimum pond size is specified by the O D P, so it, it can't go way out together, but it can. The banks can kind of get filled in to allow for construction.
Okay. But that would, uh, that would be less than ten percent of the area in size?
Um, I don't have that exact figure in front of me, um, but I, it is specified on the O D P that there is a minimum. Um, pond size. And it's a section B of the open space and landscaping section, so it can shrink. Um, and it also, the pond can also serve as the drainage facility for any of the development. Um, on the site, uh, which will actually potentially allow for that water source to be stabilized, um, because it would then. Be the runoff for the development.
And can you speak a little bit more to the mixed use development that would happen in the planning area number one? We've got. A commercial and retail and residential uh, sharing common buildings. Is that? Pretty much the concept?
Yes, we've got uh, one associating developer right now who's uh, in discussions with the owner. About a specific project type. It is that of like a, a platform residential on structured parking. Um, maybe a retail corner, uh, mix of neighborhood, commercial units, uses, excuse me. That would support the maybe four to five-story mid-rise house.
Okay.
And the outline development plan would allow for flexibility of uses, so it wouldn't necessarily require. All residential or all commercial. Um, it could either be a mix or all of one. Um, so there is some flexibility as allowed on the O D P.
Thank you. Any uh, any additional questions before I close the public hearing, Miss Holtein?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. To go back to the trees, is there a point in the process moving forward with either um. Uh, with any of the future things that we'd be looking at in which? Additional information about how the trees will be handled and the grading and some of the, the water issues. I feel like this is a concern that we've heard from the citizens about and it's a really complicated project that, um, I think. The community has a lot of interest in, in terms of what we're doing to, you know, preserve our wildlife and preserve our, our mature trees. Understanding that we have weed trees. So I guess my first question is either to Scott. Um, do we have at some point moving forward where that information would be brought forward for us to take a look at?
Um, yeah, and I, that's actually a good transition to kind of go over the process. So, um, if city council approves the outline development plan. The next step in any sort of development on the property would be a specific development plan. And planning commission is actually the final approving body for any future development on the site. So after tonight. Council no longer will see applications on the site unless there's a plat involved. Um, and planning commission will be the one reviewing all of those specifics, including landscape plan. Um, and then as part of the specific development plan, uh, we will, we as in staff will be reviewing, um, both grading. Landscape, drainage, all of that, as well as referring it back to those districts, including the Myohai Flood District, all of the ditch companies. Um, and potentially, um, because of the size of the site, they'll have to uh, get a permit from the state, um, which is a. Kind of blinking on the name, um, for the sites over an acre. Stormwater management plan.
Mess four?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Um, but yeah, though, though, there will be a lot of steps, um, between now and approval. Um, including approval by planning commission of the, the landscape and grading.
I would just add, Miss Holtein, that uh, i- if you're, if you're thinking more at a policy level of could we have? Uh, more protections in the city for requirements for wildlife surveys or tree preservation plans. Uh, those aren't um, regulations that we have in place right now. So at a policy level, if, if there's a desire to have. Or environmental protections like that that are codified. And, and, and give staff and, and the elected officials the ability to ask for more information. On those topics, you know, it's certainly something that we could talk about, but those are not in place currently.
Thank you, Mister Johnson. That's actually helpful to know. Um, is, is there any history or? Uh, precedent in which we could make a condition of approval that they preserve as many mature, non-weed trees as possible on the site?
Pick up on, if I can answer that question, to pick up on what uh, Mister Johnstone said. Where you don't have a, a requirement. To impose a requirement sort of outside of what the book has, the land use code has. Uh, that doesn't emanate from, from something in the code, requires the consent of the, of the, uh, of the property owner. And for good reasons, if you have rules in a book, those are the rules that a property owner, you know, that has to follow and then. Expect to have to develop their project in relation to. And if a new rule was to be applied, sometimes that's fine and sometimes property owners actually volunteer a condition when they come in, but it. It needs to be at the, at the, with the consent of the property owner for something that's not, doesn't have a home in the book. The, the additional condition, by the way, that, that I've asked to be added, does because it has to do with access and requires access. I can give you more detail on that if you want that condition later, but relative to this. This condition that doesn't have a. Requirement in the code book. The answer is no, it can't be just, just imposed as if it were in the book unless the property owner uh, consents.
Miss Holtein, I have a additional comment on that because the, there is actually a provision in the outline development plan. Um, one, a minimum of fifteen percent open space per planning area, um, not including the pond. And an section about, um, an arborist is being required to identify the trees, which was the study that was mentioned earlier. Um, and a, a further analysis shall accompany the SDP, which is the specific development plan, with the intent to preserve a healthy and mature tree canopy to the extent feasible, subject to review and approval of staff and planning commission. So there is, um, that intent already in, um, and I guess it would be up to planning commission at that point to determine whether the proposal meets that intent.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's all been very helpful and, um, you know, we're just Retree City USA, and we've heard a lot of citizens voicing concern about the loss of tree canopy in some of our more developed, uh, ecological areas. And as we lose some of that diversity, it impacts areas outside of the site plans we're looking at. So, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate, you know, thinking about looking at it at a policy level, and I'll definitely take that under consideration. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Additional comments or questions from council before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Ms. Dozeman, a motion is in order, and I know that we had one other condition that we may want to add to it. Are we able to put that up on the screen? Thank you.
Okay, which also. All right. I, I moved to approve Council Bill Number 19 dash 2020, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at the southeast corner of West I-70 Frontage Road, North and Ward Road from Agricultural 2A2. The plan makes use development PMUD with an outline development plan ODP on second reading and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the planning commission has recommended approval of the rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. Two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the community development department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in section 26 dash 303 of the Code of Laws with the following condition, no building permit or grading and drainage permit may be granted until resolution of the claim defect and access across tract A is resolved to the satisfaction of the city attorney.
Second. Okay, is there, um, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing that, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and will a clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much, and thank you very much, uh, Mr. Cutler and Mr. Baron for your reports on this item. Appreciate your.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will go to, um, agenda item number three. Uh, Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance repealing ordinance 1691, series 2020. An ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 9,800 West 38th Avenue. Uh, a referendum petition has been found to be sufficient with respect to ordinance 1691, series 2020, which rezoned property at 9,800 West 38th Avenue. Under section 6.2 of the charter, the council is required to either repeal the ordinance or refer this, the same to the voters. The ordinance repeals ordinance 1691.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. My notes say that it is not quasi judicial, and that's correct, Mr. Dahl. Correct. Correct, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Goff or Mr. Dahl, do we have a staff report on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Dahl, give a, a quick, uh, summary of it.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you. Actually, the, the issue was a, a good summary. I would, I would add, of course, that once you do have a referendum petition, the council is required to either send an election or, or repeal. A council chose to adopt a repeal of ordinance on first reading, uh, at its last meeting. And so this is just the continuation of that process. I also remark that the property owners, uh, were present in the Zoom meeting last time at the last meeting and requested that the council take this action. Now, it's, uh, not a request you have to grant. It's obviously the council's decision. But, uh, council made the choice to go down the repealer, uh, road, and, and that's where you are. So it's second reading with the ordinance to repealing to take effect upon adoption.
Uh, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to members of the public for comment. Uh, if you are, are a member of the public and would like to comment on this, uh, if you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, we will, uh, bring you into the meeting and, uh, and, and you may speak. So, uh, Ms. Shek, is there anyone with their hand raised?
Yes, we have Mr. Sorrentino.
Okay, Mr. Sorrentino, would you please, uh, introduce yourself and give us your address? And you may continue, uh, with your presentation.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir, I am.
My name is Raleigh Sorrentino. That's R-O-L-L-Y. Sorrentino, S is in Sam, O-R-R-E-N-T-I-N-O. I live at 4175 Teller Street in Wheat Ridge, and I'm a resident of Wheat Ridge. Uh, I'm lucky with the help of, uh, Allison to get in tonight. I tried last council meeting, and I actually showed up at City Hall, as I mentioned to some of you, and it was locked. Uh, I, I like the opportunity to go to City Hall, and, uh, of course, for the last several months, I've not been able to. But I am one that listens to your, uh, broadcast and, uh, tries to participate when I can. And, uh, what I'm talking, what I wanted to talk to you tonight about was, uh, I listen to these meetings and I listen to the council and members of the council. Often is, more often than not, they're thanking the people that come in to help with, uh, city council meetings. You had a thank you tonight with a bunch of people that presented there. Whether it's the people that come in for equity or diversity, and a lot of thanks, uh, from city council goes to city staff many, many times. Well, uh, I'm here tonight to wonder if you guys are in a position to, uh, consider giving thanks to the over 2,500 Wheat Ridge citizens who stepped up to the plate to help you do your job on this item. So you can take that and, uh, hopefully you'll understand that over 2,500 people in Wheat Ridge had a say in what you, what you folks do, and I think it's appropriate for you to give, uh, whatever good consideration should be given to those Wheat Ridge citizens. And that's what I got. I thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Shek, do we have additional speakers with their hand up in the Zoom format?
We don't, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone on the telephone who, uh, would like to speak on this item? We're happy to have you speak. Please unmute yourself.
No one on the phone, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone else again with their hand up? Okay, then we will, we will conclude our, um, citizen speaking on this, uh, item and open it up to questions from council. Uh, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask, um, if the ordinance number was assigned?
1700.
Thank you.
Are there additional, additional questions on this item? Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since, uh, since Mr. Sorrentino just brought up the petition process, um, and I know we've kind of talked about it. I just had a quick question. Maybe Mr. Kirkpatrick or, or Mr. Dahl could, uh, run through the petition process as it happened, um, with this process. Uh, typically, I know it takes 45 days and, and there were some other things that were maybe a little bit different with this. Can, can you guys go over how this happened, how this worked?
Sure. Very, the USA Today version is, once the ordinance was passed in July, citizens had 45 days to present a petition to the city clerk's office with sufficient signatures to, uh, force a referendum or repeal the ordinance. After that 45 days ended on August 27th, we reviewed the petitions. There were not sufficient signatures, which triggered a 10-day cure period during which the petitioners went and collected additional signatures. Um, at the end of the day, they had several hundred, almost a thousand more signatures than they needed to do, for a certificate of sufficiency. Uh, at that point, we had a period of time, six days, I believe, five calendar days, or five business days, during which anyone who was a registered elector could file a protest against the petition. Two of the petitioners protested these, the certificate of sufficiency that we issued because they said we were requiring too many signatures. Once they realized that they had gotten their certificate of sufficiency, they withdrew their, um, protests against the petition they had filed against the certificate of sufficiency. Uh, at that point, we referred to council. Did I answer your question, Mr. Stites?
You did. Um, so I guess my, my question is to, in, in order to get to this, it takes 10% of the last gubernatorial election, right? Or is it the last?
It's 10% of the Wheat Ridge voters who cast a ballot for any candidate in the last gubernatorial election.
Okay, and is 10%, is that statewide? Is that a constitutional thing? Is that a city?
Charter requirement. That is in the charter.
Okay, charter.
Yeah.
So that can be changed, but it would have to go to a vote and?
That's, that's right. Although the state constitution, uh, requires, I don't have a right to have, but, but I think 10% is the minimum you can require. Can't lower the, the minimums or initiative or referendum below minimums established in the, in the state constitution. So you couldn't say 2% for example. My recollection is that the, the charter is the same as the constitution on that.
Okay, just, just kind of wondering about that. Um, my other question is, as far as the petition goes, and sorry to ask so much about this, but, um, what is the requirement legally? If somebody's passing petition, do they, what do they have to tell somebody upfront? Do, does it have to match what's on the statement at the top of the petition? Can they say whatever they want? What?
Yeah, uh, the, the, both the charter, the constitution, and the statute are silent on the subject of what kind of conversation would take place between a petition circulator and a potential signer. Uh, they only say what the requirements for circulator are and what the requirements to sign are. Of course, the registered elector, the, the resident in the community. Uh, but they do not, and I think wisely, uh, don't specify what kinds of things can or cannot be said. I should say that, of course, petition itself is required to have, uh, a short description of the, the, the matter. It has to attach the, uh, ordinance being requested to be, uh, referred in this case. And that's, of course, why you have a form of petition, uh, approved by the city clerk before it may be circulated. So that is a, um, this way to say it would be, that's the best control or the most uniform control over the, the paper that is in front of a potential signer, is that petition. And, and that is uniform, because you can only have one form of petition that's duplicated and circulated. What circulators then can say about that as they're asking people to sign is not controlled, in my opinion. Uh, really shouldn't be. That's not really a, a role for the, for the government. That becomes part of really a campaign. And there's nothing, uh, nothing wrong with that.
Okay, so there's no, whatever they're saying doesn't necessarily have to be truthful?
That, that's, that's correct. There's no, there's no control over that, over that dialogue.
Okay.
Uh, because it's, it's, uh, it's effectively, uh, a campaign plus legislation when you think about it. Yeah, there's not a lot of control over that kind of dialogue and never has been.
But presumably, if somebody's going to come and testify before council, then that testimony is truthful?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Run in and?
That's correct.
Okay.
And of course, you know, we have initiative referendum in this state. Most western states have it. Many eastern states don't. It's really a product of states west of the Mississippi. But that is one form of legislation and is direct legislation. As I, you can appreciate both initiative and really to some degree referendum, which is what you saw here. And it's the citizens doing their own legislating or asking you to unwind legislation as is true. You have passed and, and the, the arena in which that legislation takes place is really the conversations out there in the community. And people come in to testify on legislation. Notice the council does not require them to swear, only when it's a quasi judicial, quasi judicial matter. But generally in legislation, swearing isn't required. But nevertheless, there is, of course, a difference between, interesting, how the process evolves between you doing the legislating and the citizens doing it. And that's well-recognized in the state. Citizens doing legislation has, does not have the same constraints, I guess, and just doesn't proceed quite in the same way. But that's, uh, contemplated by the constitution and by your charter.
Okay, last question, sorry. Um, I know, or I believe there were a couple of people that maybe wanted to get their name removed from the petition once it had been turned in. That's not something that you can do even if you want to, right?
That's correct. Once, once the petition's been turned in, it's, it's, uh, in the hands of the city clerk and in the jurisdiction of the city. And, and, uh, once that line is crossed, you've made whatever choice you've made, and, and it stays there.
Okay, so even though you found out that maybe what you were told wasn't the, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, thank you. Additional, uh, questions or comments on this, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's kind of on a similar lines to what Mr. Stites was mentioning. In the case of a city council member, in order for us to legislate, we have to become elected. And in order to be elected, we have to adhere to campaign finance laws. Uh, but as it appears in this situation, because it's not actually on the ballot, uh, that's only, that's the only instance when campaign finance laws are coming to effect. And, uh, is there any changes that we could be made to ensure that these types of efforts adhere to basic campaign finance? Disclosures and experiences and?
That's a fair question. An interesting one. Uh, if you don't mind, it's never a question, it's not a question I've ever had to take, but you're right that the, there is no campaign, effectively no campaign that the law recognizes, I think, what you're making. Until the, the petition's been turned in, and in fact, it, it turns into a ballot measure. Council chooses to send it to the ballot, and until then, it's just a lot of informal contacts really, as has been discussed, and there's really not a campaign finance law that doesn't extend to that. I'd be happy to look at whether the city is a whole rural city, which has livery power to govern elections. We have the ability to have some form of requirements on the passage of, of initiative referendum petitions. The law's pretty clear that, that while there are some minimums, percentages that we discussed in the, in the constitution, the constitution and the statutes both say that, oh, rural cities, uh, may provide their own procedures for the implementation of initiative and referendum. And to me, to my mind, that would extend to some form of, of campaign finance or initiative or referendum process review. So, uh, I'm, I'm happy to follow up on that.
I think that's something that we should at least consider, uh, given the fact that I understand both sides had some sort of concerted effort around, uh, either getting signatures or robocalls, uh, encouraging people not to sign the petition. So, uh, in this case, it, it seems like the, it doesn't, we can't really tell where the money comes from or, or what kind of effort was put into it. But in other situations, it may behoove us to have that transparency, but we can.
Certainly, it's certainly not regulated by the statute, and it's pretty clear that rural cities can, can, can regulate where there isn't a statute and often where there is one. And so it would, strikes me as it would not be an improper, uh, arena for the city to, to involve itself in short of, of, um, affecting First Amendment speech rights, for example. But, but certain, you know, reporting requirements, et cetera, would, I think, be appropriate. Be happy to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my experience with petitions, and I've signed many petitions, um, is at the beginning of a petition, there's like an introduction. It actually states what the petition is. And, um, the person who is getting signatures asks the people, you need to read this so that you know what you are signing. Now, whether people are signing petitions and then come back later and say, oh, I didn't want to sign it, that's their responsibility. Now, whether people are signing petitions and then come back later and say, oh, I didn't want to sign it, that's their responsibility. So it's put right on a petition exactly what the petition is about. And then it's stated, you know, do you live in Wheat Ridge, do you live here or whatever, that kind of a thing and, you know. Petition carriers are not asking people for ID or anything like that, and so. Uh, the information is at the top of a petition. And it explains what the petition is, and if anybody is going to sign a petition, it's. Their responsibility to know what they are signing, so, um, it's not, you know. Not true information, so, um. That's just my point on it, thank you.
Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, at this point, would just like to ask that we maybe return back to item number three. Um, I feel that we've. Kind of gotten a little sidetracked in that if, um. Uh, members of council would like to bring up, uh, things about, um. Finance reports or about petition experience or have this conversation, then, um. I'd be happy to move some of that to a future study session, but for now, I'd like us to move back to item number three.
Is there further discussion on the item? Before I close the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing and a motion is in order, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve council bill number twenty dash. Twenty twenty and ordinance repealing ordinance sixteen ninety-one. Series twenty twenty on second reading, order it published and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Who was the first second on that one?
I was.
May, uh, second one, Mr. Urban? Um, is there a? Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Holteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we heard from Mr. Sorrentino tonight, uh, asking council to thank the, the people who signed the petition, and I just want to clarify that. We're doing this tonight, uh, because I think the thanks goes to the Hardees. The Hardees specifically came forward and said that they heard the concern and are willing to reduce the number of units. And they also specifically mentioned concern about the additional cost of the city. To have a special election for this, and they were concerned in a year where we're already cutting back on our city budget. That they didn't want to be the hardship that caused an additional sixty to hundred thousand dollars for us to have a special election, so. I would like to thank the Hardees for their sensitivity to what the community. Asked and their willingness to reevaluate their project. And, uh, and I'd like to thank them also for being sensitive to our city's budget this year and that we're. All pinching pennies with the economic issues that we're facing, so. Uh, thank you to the Hardees and I look forward to seeing what they bring back, thank you.
Thank you, is there further discussion on the motion? Okay, we will go to a vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please count the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we are now at agenda item number four, I will introduce this. Each year. Uh, city council members elect by majority vote a mayor pro tem who serves until their successor is elected. Uh, the election is conducted according to section three. Uh, parent B of the city council rules of order and procedure as follows, B, mayor pro tem one. At the first or second regular meeting of, in November of each year. The council shall elect a mayor pro tem who shall serve until their successor is elected. The procedure shall be as follows. A, the chair will announce the floor is open for nominations for the position of mayor pro tem. B, nominations will be taken from council members by, uh, by voice, no second is needed. C, each nominee will have the opportunity to address the council. D, a motion and second is then in order to elect one of the nominees to the position of mayor pro tem. If the motion is not carried, additional motions are in order until a mayor pro tem is elected by a majority of the council present. So I would like to, um, open the floor for nominations for mayor pro tem, Mr. Stites.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Councilwoman Janice Hoppy, please.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Hoppy. Uh, are there further nominations from the floor? Seeing none, I will close the nominations, um, and I will give. Uh, yes, Ms. Hutchinson.
I'd like to nominate Zach Urban.
Okay, I'm gonna open the floor back up for nominations and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Nurban, Mr. Urban is nominated also.
I, I would, uh, respectfully decline the nomination, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban, Mr. Urban's name is not on the floor anymore, Ms. Hoppy's name is on the floor, are there any further nominations? Okay, I'm going to close the nominations, uh, Ms. Hoppy, would you like to address the council?
I would just like to say that I truly enjoy doing, being the mayor pro tem. While our mayor is present very often and I have not had very many opportunities to lead meetings. I have had lots of other opportunities to, um, work with council on, on individual levels and, um, to also represent our city and. And, um, you know, different ceremonies like the Veterans Day ceremony last year and. Um, I really do enjoy it, I enjoy, um, I believe that I try to. Be an, an, an open space where, um, if you. Have something that you would like to get done, but you don't quite understand the process, I believe I make it. Comfortable and I'm good with communication, we'd be able to help you walk through that. Um, and I, um, really enjoy the scheduling aspect and, and I really, I appreciate, um, everybody's confidence in me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy, um. A, uh, motion and a second, uh, to elect Ms. Hoppy to the mayor pro tem position are in order. Do I, do I hear a motion?
I move to, uh, point, uh, Jase Hoppy as mayor pro tem.
Second.
Thank you, and, uh, so we have a motion by Mr. Stites and a second by Ms. Holteen, is there discussion on the motion? A hearing none, we'll go to a vote, all is in favor of, uh, of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please count the votes?
Mr. Mayor, we have unanimously reelected.
That sounds like acclamation to me, thank you very much, council, thank you very much, Ms. Hoppy, for your work that you've done as a mayor pro tem, you've done a very. Super job, I think, and glad to have you on board again, so. That concludes the, uh, agenda items for tonight's meeting. We will now go to. City managers matters. Our, uh. Yeah, Mr. Goff.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of quick things, um. There was a speaker earlier this evening that, uh, mentioned, um, that he was, he's not able to come to city hall to, uh, provide citizen comment, I just want to. Make sure that people that who are listening, um, know that, um, that's not actually the fact, um, we have set up a process where, um. If you don't have the capabilities or capacity at home to, uh, maybe use Zoom or have a computer and, or if you just want to. Come to city hall, you, you can do that, um, and provide citizen comment at any council meeting, we, we did have to, um. Uh. Not do that one evening before the last election, just because, um, we had election polling, um. A polling place in our council chamber, so we couldn't use the chambers that evening because of security for the, the polling. Equipment, but, um, otherwise, uh, any citizen that wants to come at a council meeting and, and speak at city. City hall, they can do that, they just need to, um, RSVP, and, um, just because of our. Um, safety precautions because of COVID still, we need to, uh, make sure that we're following, um. Uh, social distancing, uh, requirements, so. Um, anybody is welcome to come in as long as you RSVP. Um, secondly, we, um, I would like to get some traction from city council. Um, on a, a matter that has come up recently, it's actually come up over several years. Um, we, the city, city's code requires that, um, every entity. That, um, constructs a project in the city. Um, and pulls a building permit, they must pay building, um, use tax. Um, I brought this back to council numerous, several years ago to ask. If they wanted to, a previous council, if they wanted to exempt any agencies, um, nonprofits. Or agencies that have a state exemption from, from tax, and at that time, that council said no. Um, let's continue, uh, requiring that all, any, any, um, anybody that pulls a building, um. Building permit has to pay building use tax, um, the state does exempt housing authorities across the state. Um, but as a home rural city, Wheat Ridge. Um, decides what and what they're not going to tax. And, and again, as I mentioned, we, we do require everybody even exempt. Um, agencies must play, pay building use tax. Um, the Jefferson County Housing Authority, um, who is now, um, I always forget their name, Zach, you probably know, Foothills Housing.
Foothills Regional Housing Authority.
Thank you, sir, Foothills Regional Housing Authority, they just changed the name, you know, that they've done numerous projects in the city and they're, they're currently doing a few, if you remember, they're working on the Caesar Square project. Um, where we, the city gave, um, allocated our private activity bonds. Both for, um, two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty for that project. And, um, they do have, uh, building use tax due for that project and, um, I had to. Mention to them that our city code requires that they pay building use tax and only city council can change that, so my question is. Does city council want us to bring back an action item for city council to exempt? Um, the housing authority on. A specific project or to change our code so that we exempt, um, housing authorities. For all projects in the future from paying building use tax. Mr. Dog, anything you would like to add to that?
Yes, I prefer if there were an exemption, then it'd be to a class of. Uh, of, uh, organizations rather than a named organization. Uh, because. Use taxes need to be uniform across classes. Proper, you can have as many different classes of property as you'd like. Uh, but, uh, to call out an organization by name. Uh, is not favored and instead it would. I'd recommend that if, if you want to do that, it would be to exempt housing authorities. Maybe just in parallel to the exemption granted at the state level, and we can look at how they articulate. The exemption in state statute and that, that's the only. Kind of modification I'd make to the recommendation.
Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be important for us to also look at, um, nonprofits, if you consider that we have the family tree in our, in our community and. Um, I know that, you know, sometimes they have to do some, some big remodeling stuff and. If one of their programs, you know, would have to do the building use tax, I know that it would be really helpful for them, so. I suppose I would just ask for consensus that we bring it, bring it back, bring back, looking at building use tax. And possible exemptions including, um, nonprofits and housing authorities. And then we can have the, the larger discussion at a study session.
Uh, we have a couple of hands in order to do that, and I believe, Mr. Urban, did you have something you'd like to interject?
Um, I, I guess, I'd like to drill down a little bit further to make sure we're looking at a certain class of nonprofit organizations. Uh, if we were to waive use tax on some larger nonprofit enterprises. We, it would be millions of dollars in losses that we could experience, I want to make sure we're. Uh, considering a specific class of nonprofits.
I think you could do that, we, we need to. Think, or, uh, kind of creatively about the. Language describing the class, but I, I think that's, that's, that's doable.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I was going to echo some of the same concerns that, uh, Councilmember Urban just brought up, because, um, I, as we know, we have a. Major tenant that's going to be coming, that's a, a nonprofit, and the only tax that they would be paying. On this large project would be, uh, a use tax, and so I just want us to be. Uh, well aware of that kind of situation in the future, and I would welcome this conversation as far as a study session goes, but I also. Also, I also find a lot of issue with, uh, public entities and nonprofits. Um, exempting themselves from things that otherwise are imposed on the general public. Um, and our taxpayers, so, um, I just, I'm. I, I would welcome this conversation, but it, it's a little touchy.
Thank you, so it looks like we had consensus to put this on a study session, so, uh, Ms. Hoppy, I'll let you work with staff to get this, uh, on the calendar. Uh, Mr. Goff, any additional items?
No, that's it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, um, uh, city attorneys matters, Mr. Doll.
Nothing tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, we'll go to, um, elected officials matters, and I'll start with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Nothing new tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, we have our treasurer, Mr. Miller on the line, Mr. Miller, do you have anything, uh, for us tonight in elected officials matters? Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor, um, just a, a quick question, um. I know council member Dozeman also heard from some of our constituents in district four about the bottling plant. Uh, it was really noisy this weekend, um. And they are wondering where we are with the enforcement of the noise ordinance. Um, and how it's impacting industrial, um, so if there's just any update either here or. Soon, um, our constituents are, are ready for that to start to improve.
Sure, I can give a, a brief update this evening, um, they did reach out to me about a week ago. Um, they are, um. Going to, uh, submit for a building permit soon to, um. Make some improvements to the plant to, uh, hopefully mitigate some of the noise. And if you, if you remember, we did give them an extension on the effectiveness of the ordinance that was passed for them to come in, in compliance. Believe it was six months, um. From, time flies, when, when did we do that now?
Ten years ago.
Ten years, I know. I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact date, they still have a few more months before they have to come in compliance. And, um, they, they can apply for a, uh, basically a, a special use permit. Um, not sure if that's a language we use to, uh. To, to, uh, for a certain, uh, decibel level up there, but it's my understanding they are gonna, they are. They're gonna be submitting for a building permit soon to make some improvements to the plan. Um, so that they can make sure that they get the, uh, decimal levels down to what it was before they made the improvements.
Okay, um, I'll probably, um. Leah, we probably should just connect on, um, what we want to do there in term. They've also just reached out to the plant and making sure that they're communicating with folks as well, um. And then I just, uh, got a note, uh, last week about, um, my daughter's preschool, Norma Anderson, I guess they're going to not be using that building. Um, starting in twenty twenty-one, and I didn't know if the city was. Aware of that, um. Or at least they weren't going to be using it for preschool, um, so Patrick, I might be following up with you or. Leah, you probably are interested in hearing about that too, um. Just to, uh, see what that means, um, for that space, um. And then I also just wanted to, um. Thank Janice, um, for everything. That you've done as mayor pro tem, especially with, um, at least me coming in as a new, um, city council member, you've been, um. Just invaluable and, and showing and guiding me through so many processes that I. I thought I knew about, but didn't, um, and so I'm, I'm just so, um, grateful for your leadership and. I'm excited for, um, your next tenure here, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, so council member Nosler Beck touched on one of the items that I was going to ask staff about this evening. Um, we definitely are looking for, uh, an update as far as. If something is going to be put in place, um, you know, we need to, I think we need to inform the public. One, about the noise ordinance, um, and two, maybe we just speak directly to the constituents in that area regarding the. The bottling plant, um. And another item, uh, I, I wanted to thank Public Works because, uh, you know, I, I forgot to do so. After the first snowstorm and a lot of my coworkers always mention about. The roads being plowed so well in Wheat Ridge and, uh, you know, obviously there's a method to their madness and it's working well, so. I just want them to keep on, keep it on, um, and just want them to know that we are appreciated, appreciative of their work, um, and. They do it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman, um, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, not much tonight, just, uh, I know it's snowing out, so take care of your neighbors, I know we've got elderly neighbors and things like that, that, uh. We need help shoveling, take care of them and, um. If you can find it, find it and buy in Wheat Ridge, we've got, uh, Small Business Saturday coming up.
That's right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stites, uh, Ms. Weaver.
Um, I just wanted to thank everyone in district two who's taking great care of the goats at Happiness Gardens. Um, they really enjoy their new space or their temporary space and I have.
Um, they really enjoy their new space or their temporary space. And I have had a chance to talk to several neighbors and um, just really, really happy to, to see them move around. So uh, thanks District Two for being such a great welcome wagon. I know that there's some great stuff being done at the elementary this week around um, ruminants.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got three things. Uh, I'd like to thank uh, just our Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder's Office. We had a phenomenal election last week and our voter turnout in our county was just shy of ninety percent, which I just think everyone should feel really proud of. That's phenomenal. That's uh, I think just a good indicator of the level of engagement, but also the accessibility of voting. And that's our county. But I also know that uh, our own clerk plays a role in that. So I just want to thank everyone for, for making it so easy and inspiring to vote. Uh, secondly, I want to thank Amanda for bringing the goats to District Two. Uh, we've been over several times. My neighbors and I uh, have really just made a point of getting over there to see it. And I think it's just a great community builder. So thanks for letting the, the goats go a little further afield this time. And then my last thing is, I, I would like to ask to add a study session about uh, evaluating a wildlife and habitat management plan for Wheat Ridge. Um, so if I have a second for that. Would anyone?
Okay. We have that. So if uh, Ms. Hoppy, if you will work with, you know, with staff to get that on a future uh, study session, that'd be great.
Great. Thank you. For everyone.
Could you repeat that again? The wildlife and habitat?
Wildlife and habitat management.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Holtein. Uh, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the issue of uh, use tax and nonprofits, I was wondering if we could either have uh, Treasurer Miller or staff look at a, a five-year look back on uh, what we've received in revenue from use tax uh, generally. And then as it relates to those two different categories, so we can get a, a good picture of what we're dealing with or examples of that.
No, Mr. Urban, we'll, we'll look into our system. I'm not sure um how well it's broken down into nonprofits and for-profits, but we'll see how that's categorized. Um, we'll see what we can pull out.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Urban. Uh, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just like to state that I'm so glad the political ads are over. And also, um, you know, I want to wish the veterans out there a happy Veterans Day. You know, on the eleventh. And I want to thank Janice for all of her work that she does. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, speaking of Ms. Hoppy, we'll go to Ms. Hoppy next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that Councilmember Urban had um, a really good point about looking at if we could as a home rule um, require finance reports for referendums. And so if you would like to um, put that on a study session, I would be happy to back him up on that.
I would move that we uh, bring that subject to a study session.
Super. Thank you. Um, and then I would, um, I'd like to say I, that I'm, I'm really proud of our, of our community for doing things like supporting our small businesses and and um, reminding people to support those small businesses. And we do those in, in other ways like um with supporting them with like uh, some, with masks and, and stuff like that, that they, that they need. And um, and I, I think that um, as a community as a whole, what I've noticed since I've moved here in two thousand eleven is that we are very serious about protecting our small businesses and supporting them. And I really appreciate all of our citizens for keeping that in mind. Um, I also just wanted to say that um, I wanted to say that I will be happy to um, honor and remember the vets. Um, our veterans on November eleventh. I think it's important that we celebrate them every year. And um, I know that uh, my, my grandfather, my father and my husband, every year when I call them and speak to them on Veterans Day, they um, they actually feel really seen. Because I know, especially my father, who was a Vietnam vet, it, it really wasn't a great welcome home when I got home. And so if you have any vets in your life, I would just um, would encourage you to reach out to them and um, tell them thank you on um, Veterans Day. Other than that, I'm so thankful that um, I have everybody's support to be your mayor pro tem for another year. And I hope everybody has a great night.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody for joining us tonight who was able to join our meeting. Uh, I want to um, uh, announce that the next Saturday at nine o'clock will be Coffee with the Mayor. Uh, it's a Zoom format on the virtual screen. So if you're able to join us, the uh, login information is on our website. Uh, I would like to thank uh, Colonel Peterson for joining us tonight. And, and I really want to uh, express my my sincere thanks and uh, and appreciation to all of the members of our armed services uh, now and in years past, who have done so much for all of the people and the world that we inhabit in our community. It's uh, it's uh, because of these individuals that serve our country that we have the, the freedom to make the decisions that we do. Uh, and we are truly grateful about that. So if there is no further business to come before the council, then we will stand adjourned. So I will adjourn this meeting. Thanks so much. Be very careful. We have uh, children in the streets out there, so be careful as you drive.